Good morning. Oh, that's loud. I called the planning and zoning meeting as of October 6, 2021 to order. Would everybody please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Jim Harris. Doug Hardy. Donald Bergen. Dan McGowan. Chad Nelson. Susanna Ballard. Matthew Mitchell. Sam Levin. Gabrielle Medley. Here. And David Diaz.
Here.
Thank you. We've had Mr. Sam Levin and Ms. Ballard to join us up here to have a quorum. And is there any correspondence or announcements, Luke?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners, thank you. At the most recent city council meeting, they approved the Lake Havasu Avenue rezone that the commission recommended approval on, and then also approved the Desert Kirsage final plat for, I think it was six units subdivision, a small subdivision there that the planning commission acted on, the preliminary plat. That's all the announcements I have. Thank you.
Okay. Minutes from the previous meeting, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections, or a motion?
I make a motion to approve the meeting.
Thank you.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. The structure of the meeting will allow the staff to present an item. The commission may ask staff any questions, and then the applicant will have an opportunity to present. Commissioners may have questions for the applicant, and then I will open the discussion to the audience. We ask that if you would like to address the commission, please do so, but there's a time limit of one trip to the podium per topic and three minutes to speak. Please spell your name and your last name for the record. I will close the discussion and bring the item back to staff and ask for their recommendation. The commission will then hear a motion, discuss, and make a recommendation to the city council for the final consideration. Our first item is ID 21-2989, a request for a preliminary subdivision plat for V-LTD, LTD Homes, 1820 Bimini Lane, tract 115, block four, lot 10, creating a five-unit residential condominium subdivision in the multiple-family RM district. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Vice Chair Commissioners, thank you very much. The subject property is a single lot of over, just over 1.1 acres. It's located on Bimini Lane, east of Bahama Lane, near the end of Bimini Lane, and then Lake Havasu Avenue is the connector that goes to Bahama and Bimini Lane. The subject property is zoned RM, multiple-family. That zoning district allows multiple-family residential as a permitted use. The other properties along Bimini Lane are zoned RM and are a mix of multiple-family development and vacant lots. The properties to the south are zoned R1 and are developed with homes and a couple vacant Here's an enlargement of the preliminary plat map. It's showing proposed condominium plat in order to sell each of the five individual units. There are five residential units with attached garages, and then there's a parcel A, which is a common area. All onsite sewer and water services will be privately owned and maintained. Building permit and design review applications for one of the units has been submitted in this pending review. The project will have a property owners association to manage and maintain the private drives and any improvements. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions. Thank you.
Does the commission have any questions of staff? Hearing none. I'll ask a question. Luke, if you could just explain the condition of the RM zoning district?
Well, the RM zoning district is a multiple-family zoning district. It has setbacks of 15 feet in front and rear of the property and five feet on the sides. It allows a maximum building height of 30 feet. There's a minimum square footage per dwellings. I don't recall exactly what they are off the top of my head, but these particular lots, units that will be built here will far exceed, I think it's like 500 square feet required for residential dwelling on the RM zoning. Hopefully that answers your question. Thank you.
And I believe the units per acre is limited to 20?
The RM, yes, I believe 20 is the maximum dwelling, number of dwelling units per acre there.
Okay. Any other questions to staff? Hearing none. Is the applicant present, and would the applicant like to present?
I am present. I would like to present.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item, you can step forward at this time. Hearing none, we will, we will close that portion and bring it back to staff for recommendations.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, Mr. Vice Chairman Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends approval of land use action number 21-2989, a preliminary subdivision plat for V-LTD Homes, 1820 Bimini Lane, tract 115, block four, lot 10, creating a five-unit residential condominium subdivision in the RM district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. We'll bring this back to the commission for discussion and/or a motion.
I have a question. So, yeah, I thought the applicant might speak, but that's fine. So, what is the size of the garages? Are they, you know, are we talking boat-deep garages in these condo complex? Those are pretty, pretty small units, the square footage of those lots, except for the one in the end.
That would be a good question for the applicant. My understanding, I think there were pull-through, there were like a two-story structure, but the applicant would certainly have more information on that.
Okay. Yes, please. Yes, please come up. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
My name is Will Wenger, W-E-N-G-E-R-T. The units are large units, actually. Smallest having a ground footprint of about 3,000 square feet. They are pull-through units with aprons on both sides, approximately 50 to 60 feet on each side. The ground floor of the unit, because they're pull-through, can be used for boat parking, RV parking. There's an elevator shaft there as well. There's also an area for a single pull-through, pull-in garage, pull-in, pull-out with a regular garage door. And there's some area in that space, depending on the owner's use, to be able to use that as a man cave type, you know, throw some couches in, et cetera. But that's the general idea of that.
No, and thank you, thank you. I just usually ask that question because, as you know, we have a parking situation where people start bringing in their boats and their trailers, and, but it sounds like you have that, if you got that pull-through.
Yeah, and it's covered really well in the CCNRs as well with regard to what outside dedicated spaces each unit would have, and the fact that the majority of everything would go inside anyway. Nothing's allowed to be parked outside overnight, et cetera.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions to the applicant from the commission? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wenger.
Yeah, my pleasure.
And I will bring it back to the commission for discussion and/or a motion.
Motion to approve with staff.
Mr. Levin has made a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Medley. And we will call for the vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, and congratulations to the applicant. All right. Our next item on the agenda is ID 21-2991, a request for a zone change to amend the zoning classification and district boundary of the center plan development, 97-005, removing and rezoning 6701 Highway 95, parcel one, from general commercial plan development, C2PD, to a new C2PD to allow self-storage, mini-storage, truck and trailer sharing, covered RV canopies, delivery and receiving area, showroom, and related retail sales uses, and a 45-foot building height exemption. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Vice Chairman Commissioners, thank you. Here's the area map for the property. The subject property is located at the northern entrance into Lake Havasu City at the northwest corner of London Bridge Road and Highway 95. It's directly north of the Showplace Avenue-London Bridge Road intersection. It's outlined in red here. It's about 10 acres. It's triangular shaped. At the base is about 560 feet wide, abutting London Bridge Road, and the two sides are about 1,700 feet long, give or take. The site was rough graded in 2009. It is about 10 to 15 feet below the street, the highway elevation of the surface of Highway 95. There's an existing signal light at the intersection of Highway 95 and London Bridge Road. The site is currently undeveloped, and there is no access from the property onto Highway 95. As far as the zoning, the properties to the south across London Bridge Road are zoned C2 plan development, and there are a mix of storage units and vacant land. The property to the west is owned by the State of Arizona and the BLM. They're vacant and zoned agriculture preservation. And then to the east is, of course, the Highway 95, across Highway 95 is the city airport. A little background, the development plan for the property, it has some history to it. The subject property is at the northernmost portion of this 215-acre, the center plan development that was approved in, excuse me, 1997 overall. So, if we, for your bearing, Anderson Toyota is here. London Bridge Road, of course, is a bust, the south portion of the property. The shops at Lake Havasu is down here, and this property is up at the northern end of this entire center development, back in the day known as the center. That planned development rezoned the entire acreage to a C2 plan development and approved the general development plan that designated three commercial areas and one regional mall area. So, there was a commercial node down here, a commercial node, and then the mall area, and then another commercial node where Anderson Toyota is, and then this final third commercial node at the north, which is the subject property. In 2002, the planned development was amended to allow gas stations and service stations as potential uses. That approval also included the stipulation that a planned development be submitted for review and approval by the city council prior to any development on the subject property. There have been amendments to the PD for that planned development for the, a number of the properties to the south since that 2002 approval, but those changes did not affect this property. There's no, there's no other stipulations on this property other than it needs to come to the Planning Commission City Council for approval for the planned development. Here's a site plan that was submitted. To give you bearings, Highway 95, so this is rotated, so the north is to the left on this map, so Highway 95 is the top of this map. London Bridge Road is to the right-hand side. As far as the uses on the property, the main building here is about, it says 55,000 square feet. I believe that's the storage unit itself, and then I think there's some other things that, but I think the basic footprint of it is closer to 58,000 square feet. It measures about 130 feet by 450 feet deep. They're proposing indoor storage, showroom, delivery, receiving on that property. As far as that building also, the letter of intent requests to develop the property as a three-story, 45-foot-tall self-storage building. Because the underlying C2 zoning maximum height is 25 feet, there, this has to come to the commission and the city council as a planned development to ask for an exception to allow taller than 25 feet maximum building height. So, that coupled with the previous approval that it needs to come, stipulation that needs to come before the council for a planned development prompts this request before you today. So, in addition to the main building, there are mini-storage units that are scattered about the property. They're kind of outlined here in this blue. So, there are 46 mini-storage units beside the building, and then near the northern terminus of the property, there's 18 more, 11, and 17 more mini-storage units. They're also proposing 13 open RV parking spaces or storage spaces here along the bottom of the property, and then 84 covered RV spaces in four different pods, 15 and 21, 25 and 15 covered RV spaces. They've also provided a landscaping plan. It shows the required landscaping buffer, including trees and shrubs fronting Highway 95 and London Bridge Road right-ofways. It shows at least 10% of the property is landscaped. The proposed trees along the right-ofways should help act as a buffer between the right-ofway and the subject development. The proposed landscaping meets this development standards of the zoning code. The applicant has provided some exterior elevation mockups. This is the representation, how the proposed building would look when viewed from Highway 95. As you can see, the maximum building height, as you know, the maximum building height is 25 feet. They're proposing 45 feet in building height, and they're asking for the exception to allow the building height as part of this planned development application. The request for a height exception allows the building, for more visibility, have impact along Highway 95. The majority of the site sits below the elevation of Highway 95, 10 to 15 feet. The elevations, these elevations that they presented here don't show the landscaping trees and shrubs along Highway 95. So, if this is developed per the plan, there will be some, some trees in here as additional buffer. So, this is the view they provided from London Bridge Road, excuse me, from Highway 95, and here's the view they provided from London Bridge Road. Also in your packet are building elevations and different details for the building elevations themselves. These are, I thought, were the most appropriate to view at this meeting with these two slides. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions the planning commission may have. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from the commission to staff? Hearing none. I just want to clarify the current C2PD height restrictions, 25 feet. Is that correct?
That's correct. This particular planned development had no other changes to it, no other exceptions. It was just, one of them was to come to the Planning Commission City Council ultimately for approval of development. There were no exceptions allowed for height in it. So, it would maintain the base height of 25 feet based on the C2 underlying zoning district.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Any other questions to staff? Hearing none. We'll have the, is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to make a presentation?
No, sir. It was covered quite well.
Okay. Then we will open this up to the audience. Does the commission have any questions of the applicant?
So, you're, I have a question for you, so.
Actually, Mr. Diaz, let's, let's have the public speak first, and then maybe we can call the applicant. Is that okay?
It's fine.
Okay. Is there any members of the public that would like to come up and speak? If so, please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Hello, my name is Terry Meyer, M-A-I-E-R. And with Lake Havasu basically being a resort community and a retirement community, when you drive in from 95 North, that would be an eyesore. You know, being a resort community, that being right on the outskirts of town, basically people would start saying, well, if you want to find London Bridge Road, you go out to U-Haul. That's not a big, a good moniker to have for Lake Havasu becoming a storage unit town from a resort community, and that's what it's becoming. When you come down that hill, you know, the mall in itself, it's not bad, but when you, everybody here knows what I'm talking about, I'm sure. You look over there, and that's a bermis, to be honest with you, at 45 feet. There's not a tree in town that's that tall, maybe a few palm trees. So, I think the general public or the outlook of people coming into town and seeing that not going to be real, we'll say, forgiving to the town. It almost looks a little industrial, and being a resort community and having a first impression of an industrial town is not real good, I don't think. That's just my take on it. I mean, like you said, I've seen those, and most of you have probably seen those around the country. They do have a purpose, they do have a function. Right there is probably not the place, or at 45-foot elevation is probably not good either. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else from the audience that would like to ask any questions or comments? Okay. Would the applicant please come up and? I didn't mean to cut you off, Mr. Diaz.
Good morning. My name is Jim Pena, J-I-M-P-E-N-A.
So, the question I have is the additional 20-foot request for a height, is that, is there going to be two-story, a second-floor storage? Is that what that's for?
Correct. That's a storage building.
Okay. That was my question. I wanted to make sure.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Is there any other questions to the applicant?
I do.
Probably going to sound a little naive, but why go so tall and not wider?
Oh. Is it not on? Did I do something wrong?
Okay. Yeah. Why go so tall and not wider?
Well, typically, I mean, for the size of the building, the air conditioning capacity to, the more we spread it out, the bigger footprint we get. It gets a little bit wider. I know taller is similar, but in our experience, when we do that, it also makes it more economically viable for us as well, to add more storage rooms than other floor rooms.
Yeah. So, it's cheaper than building them, building a wider, lower building?
Not necessarily.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Pena, I have a, well, I don't know if you know the history of these properties, but it's been, there's been, you know, a lot of different applications coming through, through these, these properties, and a lot of changes to make things work. So, number one, we appreciate you bringing something to Lake Havasu to present. But the, the height issue is always going to be, no matter if it's a house or a garage or a building, it's, it's always an issue in Havasu because of the, the views of the lake as you're coming into town or as you're building a structure next to your house. This is always going to be an issue on every zoning change that we ever come up against. But to follow up on Mr. Levin's question, something that I see with the site plan, one thing that, that I don't really like about the site plan is the, the open storage, where it has the 15 covered RV spaces and the 25 covered RV spaces, and you do have a large footprint that you could, you could stay within the heights restriction and have buildings as a facade instead of open storage? Is that something that you guys haven't discussed or something you would consider?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. And it seems with the widths, too. I mean, I'm on the operations side of it right now. I don't represent real estate, but from my conversations, yes, it's, it's something we can discuss for sure.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have another question with regard to the architectural drawing.
Yes.
Is that just a typical drawing of the type of facility that you have? Or is there something that could be done to modify this facade of it to make it look better?
Sure is. We run with a basic template and kind of tweak it depending, you know, some cities like in Wickenburg where we just opened it, opened a location there, it gives it more of the ranch rustic look. So, we try to reflect the area, so, but there is some room in there as well.
Okay. I'm just saying that from the perspective of, I mean, this is what people see when they drive in.
Yeah, of course.
And we want it to be something that's a little more, I think, representing of our community.
Sure. And we have multiple design plans in multiple cities that we do, so I'm sure our designers can work on something, you know, and submit that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pena.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and any questions of, of staff. And Ms. Medley, you bring up a good point about design review. Luke, is there anything that you can do to explain how that process works to the commission?
Well, typically with design review, it's handled by staff. We would review plans that are submitted, and then based on the zoning district, look at the development code and determine that if the project meets design review standards for landscaping, parking, screening, appearance, things like that. And if they don't, then we would send a correction notice or a red line to the applicant, ask them, then make changes to it. In something like this, which is a planned development, you'll, you'll notice that the proposed motion is to, for approval of this, but based on the submitted site plan, landscaping plan, and building elevation. So, in this case, it, it's more, it has to be pretty much exactly really close to what is being approved by, eventually by the city council. And so, when design review is done on that by staff, we have a pretty good template of what exactly it needs to look like, or very close to what it needs to look like when it comes to staff. So, that's part of the benefit, one of the benefits of the planned development, especially if there's a, a site plan and a building elevations for that project, is the, the public can be pretty certain what's going to happen there because it's already been reviewed, looked at, and then conditioned as a, one of the conditions of approval of the planned development approval.
I have a question. I have a question on the landscaping. Is it possible to put taller trees, more density, to take away some of that, what the person driving in from the north would see? Wouldn't it hide a lot of, is there any restriction on height for trees or bushes or whatever?
Well, as far as the landscaping plan, thank you for the question. We don't have a specific height for trees. We do have a container size, which is 25-gallon container size, no, I'm sorry, a 24-inch container size. If the planning commission and city council wanted to add a stipulation about a condition for additional landscaping, naming density, no number of trees or shrubs, right now it's one tree for every 40 feet of frontage is required if you wanted to up that and then increase the height of the trees, have a minimum size for the trees, that's certainly something you can put in a motion as part of this since it is a planned development.
Yeah, because if we had more density, higher, then it would take away Yeah, because if we had more density, higher, then it would take away a lot of the other gentleman's concern about what they see when they drive into town. It would, it would slow that down. I would think. Thank you.
Mr. Diaz.
Luke, I thought I heard as part of your presentation, and just correct me if I'm wrong, so the property sits below Highway 95?
That's correct.
And then did you say that one of the reasons for the 45-foot request is because, so it could be seen as people are driving in? Did I hear you say that?
I believe part of the reason for the request was so that the heights for their design, and of course, they would want to, I presume, the building visible from the highway, he'd mentioned that they get most of their business by people driving by and noticing it. So that, I'm presuming that's part of their reasoning for the, generally for the height of the structure, and it's one of their standard designs apparently for that sort of footprint.
And I probably should know this answer, but I don't, so I'm being a bad lawyer. What is the, what is the other options for this property if this is not approved by the city council? Other type of retail or?
Let's see, I believe I have, let's see if we have the permitted uses table here. Basically, all the permitted uses in the C2, general commercial, so that would be restaurant. In this case, it's not ruled out for storage units. On the south, there's some that say no storage units. In this case, it's all uses that are allowed in the C2, which is a, it's not the limited commercial, which is more general. It's more of a heavier C2 commercial. It's not like light industrial, but it'd be things like, of course, you can have restaurants, you can have outdoor storage, you could have, with a conditional use permit, you could have storage units, you could have a car sales lot, RV sales, boat sales, those sorts of uses. Trying to think, C2 area in town, kind of like the south side, it has a C2 feel to it, although it's not technically C2 zoning there, but it would be the more intense commercial uses that aren't really industrial-type uses.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions to staff?
I have one.
Ms. Medley?
I know that the design will be looked at later, but can the motion contain that we would like to see something better with aesthetics as far as the design?
Well, I would think that the motion could be whatever you would like to add to it, since it is a planned development and it will be based on the plan that's submitted and any conditions that are added to the, to the approval. So how you would phrase that or couch that, I mean, it, design can be, one person looks at something and then likes that design, another person looks at it, doesn't like the design, so how do you frame that, that motion or that condition to say?
Maybe it's just from signage, or, I mean, obviously signage is part of the marketing. However, you know, when you're driving in, I think that's part of the issue, is that we don't want to be like the U-Haul city. We want it to be a little more aesthetic than that, maybe move the signage or do some facade change that would make it more palatable for a resort community. So that was just a question. I know design is down the road, but I think that's going to be extremely important. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one more question, Luke. The property I'm looking at, the highway out there, you said it's obvious that it's raised higher than the building footprint is. How much difference is the building sitting below the highway? Won't that save some of the 45 feet?
Well, thank you for the question. As far as the elevation of the site itself, it's like, like I said, like 10 to 15 feet below the elevation of the highway. So presuming that the existing grade of the lot is zero for measuring the height, so we go up 45 feet from there, and if the highway is 10 feet, let's say, higher than that, then the effective height, the appearance of the, from the highway would only be 35 feet.
Right.
And if it was 15 feet higher than it, the appearance of the, the building would be 30 feet tall, which is close to the 25-foot maximum.
And they have to do the landscaping from the site of the big building all the way to the highway anyway, right?
The landscaping would be on their property, of course, not on the ADOT right-of-way property.
Yeah.
So it would generally go along the edge of their property there, which I would presume they would keep that about level, the current elevation, I would presume. It seems like it might be a waste of time and effort to lower all that down, but it would be the first 10 feet of that property with the minimum required number of trees and shrubs.
It would make a 10-foot difference from the highway if you were standing on it.
That's correct. If the highway was 10 feet higher than the site itself, then yes, it would be, appear to be 10 feet lower than 45-feet height.
Thank you.
My only recommendation to the commission is that we be pretty careful here when it comes to, there are ordinances with signs, and there's, there's ordinances with design review, which is all in the general plan. And it's a U-Haul building. It's going to be brown and orange and tan, you know? But as far as signage goes, if it's going to be accurate to this design, and what, one of the things that Mr. Morris is trying to present to us is that when you come to the commission with a planned development, you're stamping the footprint. So not much, not much can change. And what the applicant's trying to do, and I'm not trying to promote this building, but when I look around Havasu and you drive into town and you, you're looking down Lake Havasu Avenue, there's, there's strip malls with 15-foot-wide building envelopes, and every one of those buildings has a sign, big old sign on it, and different building, different So we kind of have to, we have to fall within the ordinances for, for the design guidelines. I've had this issue with the, with planning and zoning before, and both Stu and Luke reached out to me and said, you know, come down, sit with us, and look at the ordinance and see if you want to change it. Those are things that we can, that we can do, and I'm sure that they would be happy to, you know, get your feedback if you wanted to go into the city offices and sit down with them and look at it. I don't see any issues with the signage. I'm seeing, you know, one, two, three, four signs on this building. And I don't know what the span is, but it's a pretty long building. So I don't see any issues with signage. I believe, and again, it's going to have to go through the building department, and they're going to have to go through these ordinances and make sure that it meets the ordinances. So am I correct or incorrect in that?
Well, the, the property, the project will need a sign permit for the signage on the, on the building. The maximum square footage for signage is going to be 200 square feet. Presume this will, will meet that threshold. I mean, it is 450 feet in one direction and 130 in the other direction, so I'm sure it will be a 200-square-foot maximum signage allowance, and then they could divvy that up however they like on the building, unless they ask for some exceptions for the signage, and that's not part of the request.
Okay, so in this PD, are we asking for any exceptions to the signage?
No, they're not asking for any signage exceptions.
I think height has been an issue in this. And, you know, obviously, this commission has been, you know, pro-building. We want to build out this town, get it, get it developed. 45-foot heights restriction is definitely questionable. I'd like to hear from the commission about this. One, one way that, and to give the commission, especially the new commissioners, a little bit of background, we had a mall that was not generating a lot of business. And in order to generate more business, the PED and some other individuals got involved with the mall owner, and they came to rezone the mall to C2, instead of taking it just from, just from C1, just retail, basically. And what that did is it spurred some activity, and now the mall is starting to grow. It was a pretty extensive process. But during that process, there was a higher heights restriction, and going down from C2 PD, or going down from the, the previous zoning designation to C2, they actually reduced the heights restriction. It used to be a higher heights restriction. Luke, do you remember what that heights restriction was?
Well, I don't recall that. That's not really the topic I'm, before us right now, and I don't recall what the heights restriction was. I think they may actually, my recollection is for the mall itself, they allowed taller buildings because of the facades on some of the buildings out there.
Yeah, that's what I recall as well. So anyway, I'd like to hear from the commission, your thoughts on this. All that property used to be 36 feet, as far as I recall. It's now 25 feet. The applicant's asking for 45 feet, and so we, you know, this is probably the, going to be the hot topic here and at city council. So does anybody else have any other comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. So I know, and I appreciate your comments, I know we want to build the city out, but we want to build it out smart. And I do hear from a lot of residents that they're driving into Havasu, and it looks like, it's, it looks like, instead of, instead of a resort town, it's a, it's a, or can I store my boat, we're going to store my RV town. I mean, all along, some of the best real estate we have in this city is on that side of the highway, cut all along the lake. And I think years ago, if they would have just maybe tweaked it differently, it would have probably been a better idea to put residences there and shops and so forth, and maybe put storage, not blocking the view. So it is an issue, I think, and I mean, when we drive into town before we moved here full time, we're, you know, the money shot is when you're on the Highway 95, oh, there's the lake, look how beautiful that is. And this is going to be a pretty big impediment, impediment of that, of that view. Like, it is a big building, it is a long building, but, but we have to build out smart, we have to get these lots, you know, with some buildings on them, but we have to do it, I think, in a smart, in a smart way. I know we had another issue with another storage thing, Luke, about a month or two ago, where we did get pretty specific on the facades.
Correct.
Of the building. It was part of the motion in the second, and then we had, we took a five-minute break because we, people were going back and forth on the landscaping, but I agree, I don't know if we have any 45-foot trees that we're going to be planting along Highway 95 in this town, so. But this is a comment, I've been hearing from the, from the people out in the, out in the audience today, and also just around town, you know, it is becoming to look like a storage community, and some of the best real estate we have in this town has been built with storage units. So that's just my opinion.
I have a question of Luke. Luke, because of this request to extend this to a 45-foot building height, is that going to cause an issue down the road when we have other people come to want to build in that area, that uses an example as why they should be allowed to build 45 feet as well?
Well, I think, thank you for the question. I believe it would be based on a case-by-case scenario. We would, with a planned development, you would look at that as a standalone. It may be influenced by what's around it, so let's say there are, my thought would be, let's say there are taller buildings around it, let's say there's a zoning district that allows 30 feet in height, but the, the property next to it only allows 15 feet, and then someone wants to come in and rezone it and ask for a planned development to increase the height of the 15 feet to make it taller, that seems like it may be influenced by what's around it. So I think it would be a standalone case-by-case basis, but I think you would, I think you wouldn't help but be influenced by what's surrounding it. So it's not necessarily a guarantee, but I think it, just from, just thinking about that scenario, different scenarios, it seems like it could influence.
Can I make a motion?
That's a good point, Ms. Ballard. Mr. Diaz, one thing that, and again, you can correct me if, if I'm wrong, but when these, when these PDs come through, they're, they're going to have a landscaping requirement. And I believe that the last one that came through that we had the issue with, they were at 10% as well, weren't they?
Yes, the C2 zoning district requires a minimum of 10% landscaping, and of course, all the landscape buffers along the right-of-way.
So the landscaping would be, you know, kind of the same across the board. I do have an issue with the open storage. I would, you know, I think, I think the building facade, once it's built, I don't have an issue with it, but the open storage, where it has the 15-covered RV spaces and 25-covered RV spaces, you know, that's somewhere where I think landscaping should be required to be taller than those buildings, or those buildings not be there at all. The footprint is large enough to do the square footage at 25 feet, and so I struggle with that open storage right there.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may interrupt, just to give you an example, on the building elevation that was provided, we can see the proposed example of some of the open storage, I mean, excuse me, covered storage. And then keep in mind, of course, that this does not show the trees that would be required there for, just to give you an example of what that, what the rendering shows for those covered units.
Well, those covered units are going to be at least 14-foot openings or higher, I would assume. We didn't get any measurements on those. So, I mean, even with the 10-foot, even if that, that slope is 10 feet, you know, you're still going to have to have some pretty tall plants there. Yeah, we're open for discussion and/or motion.
Motion to deny. I don't think this is going to look good for the city. I don't want to drive past it every day.
Mr. Levin, would you mind speaking more into your microphone?
Motion to deny.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Levin to, to deny this. Do we have a second or any discussion?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I don't think we necessarily brought it back to staff's recommendation.
Oh, that's correct. All right, we have a motion and a second. Can we bring that back to staff for recommendations?
Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends that the commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for Land Use Action 21-2991, a zone change to amend the zoning classification and district boundary of PD 97-005, removing and rezoning 6701, Highway 95, parcel, parcel one per the center parcel plot north, from general commercial plan development, C2 PD, to a new C2 PD, to allow self-storage, mini storage, truck-trailer sharing, covered RV canopies, delivery and receiving area, showroom and related retail sales uses, and a 45-foot building height exception rather than the current 25-foot height maximum allowed, as shown on the attached site plan, landscape plan, and building elevations. And as a reminder, this item will go to the city council's November 9 meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. So we have a motion to deny this ID number and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll call for the vote. So correct me if I'm wrong, but a yea vote would be to deny, and a nay vote would be to, to pass it. to, to pass it.
Motion passes forward to you.
Okay, and this will be, this will still go to city council?
Yes, it will go to the city council on November ninth with a recommendation from the planning commission of denial.
Okay. Good luck, Mr. Penya. At this time, we'll have a call to the public. Anybody can approach the mic and please state your name. We will not be able to respond, but we have a call to the public at this time. Okay, hearing none, any future meetings, Mr. Morris?
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair and Commissioners, thank you. The next meeting will be held October twentieth in two weeks, we do have three items scheduled for that meeting, thank you.
Okay, we are adjourned.